It's been 20 years.
So I don't want to get on one.
Not that I touched. 20 years ago?
It's changed, it's changed so much, hasn't it?
Not that it changed, it's just I forgot.
Oh, gotcha.
A lot of it has changed.
Yeah, because electronics is... Here. Here.
Don't move.
Aye.
All right, here we go. Just wanted to show the Board of Education, this was the, and the public at large, this was the notice that was published in the local papers, Sedalia Democrat, prior to this meeting as required by Missouri State Statute, which breaks down the assess valuation prior tax year to the current tax year, and how the tax ceiling was or is to be distributed through the, throughout the different funds. For us, it would be the incidental general fund and a capital projects fund. I have a couple of slides that will better illustrate that. Just another form for the tax rate for '21-'22 school year. And keep in mind that the temporary operating fund, which was voted upon and, or approved in 2007 to build this facility, generates a separate amount of revenue. The tax ceiling from the, as calculated by the State Auditor's Office, put that ceiling at .8628. All your tax rate ceilings are taken out four decimal points. We historically have placed 70 cents in the capital projects fund since that inception, and that was designed to help cover that with our WADA transfer, to help cover our long-term debt, which it will do. Always show a little bit of a historical background going back three years, as you'll see. If we go back to 1920, the tax ceiling was 3.9755. Last year, it went up slightly to 4.0120. And of course, this year, we are, ceiling as approved by the Auditor's Office is 4.0207. So basically, it went up one penny. That is due in part two, when assess valuation goes up. You are allowed to grow as much, but not more than the Consumer Price Index, and that goes back to the Hancock Amendment in the 1980s. Also, the Hancock Amendment has a provision that you can't lose a significant amount of revenue, revenue from the previous year, so it'll, it helps keep government entities, taxing authorities, revenue neutral, is the word they use. But we had a slight increase in assess valuation. On, on these slides, you'll see that last year, when I presented this information, the assess valuation, I get that every year in July, that comes from the county clerk's office, but that ultimately comes from the county assessor's office. The county clerk is just the messenger in this case. So in July, the assess valuation for Sedalia 200 School District was just over $377 million. I will, I did point out that it was revised later to just over $391 million. So the assess valuation that we were given in July was not completely accurate for the, for the whole year, because they are allowed to meet, the Board of Equalization meets, anybody that's contesting valuation, any additional, especially in the area of personal property that gets added into the assessment, can make that number fluctuate. So when you go back into the State Auditor's Office the next year, you plug those revisions in, and that helps them calculate the new tax ceiling. As you can see, this year's assess valuation is 300, just over 396, almost 397 million dollars. Estimated revenue from the levy would be 15.9 million and a little bit more, 135,000 from new construction and improvement. New revenue from the reassessment would be just over $89,000, which equals 0.53% growth in local tax revenue from last year to this year. And these are all numbers calculated again by the State Auditor's Office. Give you an example, what this means in real terms. If you had a $200,000 home and the assess valuation was $38,000 at 19%, you would be looking at a yearly increase of only $3.31 a year, or you can break it down to 28 cents a month, which I believe is pretty affordable for most people. $75,000 home, as you could see, the new tax rate will only increase that by $1.24 a year. Should be noted that our original assess valuation that we got in July this year was only 371 million and change, which meant we had a decrease in assess valuation. Under those calculations, the tax ceiling would have been just over $4.21 per $100 of assess valuation, which would have been basically a 20-cent increase, which would have been very significant. That was because the assessor's office did not have all the assess valuation entered at that time. In early, mid-August, that number got corrected, and taxing authorities in Pettis County were able to resubmit to the State Auditor's Office, as did Sedalia 200 School District, and thus, we came with a $396,000, or million, assessed valuation and only a 1-cent increase, which, which is very positive for the community. Any questions? So this is the estimate of required local taxes, which just basically, I know it's hard to see that, but it shows like the other form, that 3.3207 will be placed in the incidental fund, and .7000 will be placed in the capital projects fund. This will be signed by the Board President, the Board Secretary. I will personally hand-walk this tomorrow to the county clerk's office and submit that, and then the county clerk's office submits that to the Auditor's Office and to DESI. So then it is solidified, and then we are legally authorized to collect local tax. Questions? That is all. Thank you.
They can't hear us now.
Are they on?
I don't think your mic's on.
Oops. He was saying, "Thank you, Dr. Fraley," just, so those in the back, for his work on the tax. There you go.
I would like to add, just for complete transparency and clarification to Sedalia 200, the Board of Education is authorized to go up to that ceiling this year of .0207. The Board of Education does have the legal authority to go below that. In an odd-number year, you could, again, raise that again the following year. If you do that in an even-number year, then you have to stay with that reduction for two consecutive years. But it is my recommendation that the Board would approve the tax ceiling as calculated by the Auditor's Office.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote by the Secretary, please?
Sorry. Kenny Kofelt?
Aye.
Scott Gardner?
Aye.
Matthew Heron?
Aye.
Sam Kimpton?
Aye.
Michael Stees?
Aye.
Barbara Schrader?
Aye.
Diana Nichols?
Aye.
Motion carried. And do I hear a motion to adjourn to the regular session?
Don't move. Second.
Roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. That's perfect time. Okay. Good evening again. It is 6:30, and I will call this meeting to order. The Secretary will call the role of each Board Member. Please respond by saying "here."
Kenny Kofelt?
Here.
Matthew Heron?
Here.
Scott Gardner?
Here.
Michael Stees?
Here.
Sam Kimpton?
Here.
Barbara Schrader is here. Diana Nichols?
Here.
If you will join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Triplet has a presentation to talk about tonight?
Yeah, if I could have Connie Miller, please come down front. Is Connie, yeah. All the way from the back to the front. All of us that know Connie knows that she's very humble and doesn't like attention, but we're going to give it to her tonight, whether she likes it or not, because she has worked very hard and deserves all of the recognition she gets. Oh, she's coming, I will just let you know. This is a passed award that Connie received, and we were directed by the company that she works for, First Student Transportation, not to spoil the surprise until she got to go receive her award in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. So she has returned from Milwaukee, and we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize you tonight, Connie. The National School Transportation Association recently recognized Connie as one of seven First Student employees for their valuable contributions to the school bus industry. Connie Miller, First Student Location Manager, received the Golden Merit Award, which is one of the highest awards by the National School Transportation Association. The award honors achievements in safety, driver training, and operational excellence. Connie has worked tirelessly to ensure school buses remain the safest way for students to get to and from school. Her contributions and positive influence, her contribution and positive influence has been a valuable asset to First Student, and of course, the Sedalia School District. Miller joined First Student more than 40 years ago as a school bus driver, and now serves as the location manager for the company's facility in Sedalia. If you remember back, the tornado rolled through and destroyed our, our location in 2011, and Connie was instrumental in getting the operation up and running again. Her location consistently ranks as one of First Student's top-performing locations. The fleet she manages repeatedly receives high scores on annual state inspections. Connie, we can't thank you enough for 40-plus years of service. We had a plaque, I don't know if you want, if you maybe want to tell the story of, of your trip to Wisconsin a little bit. I know you don't like to speak in public, but it's a small group, and you pretty much know everybody here, so, tell us a little bit about your recognition of your award.
It was a beautiful plaque, but unfortunately, I left it at my mother's house in northern New York.
Mom was more proud than she was, so Mom made her leave it there.
What happened is I went to Milwaukee, beautiful plaque, beautiful city, I'd never been there, one of the cleanest cities I think I've ever seen. Got to go to the Harley-Davidson Museum. Yay. But the most enjoyable thing that I, that really impressed me, that hit my heart, is like Mr. Triplet said, I don't like recognition, I like doing my job, and that's it, was after my NSTA announcement and my award given, I was going back to my seat, and two gentlemen stood up and stopped to me, and I looked at them, and it was John Elliott and David Duke, the two people that hired me in 1978.
Very cool.
Yeah, that, that was very heartwarming for me. Of course, you know, I looked at them, I thought, gosh, they're getting old, and I thought, I think I'm getting old. But anyway, it came back to Kansas City, drove home, took a few things out of my bag, reloaded my bag, and drove 1,300 miles to see my mother. So I was gone a week there, three days in Milwaukee, and then a week in northern New York. Came back, started in on my route, so, you know, I love this district, it's one of the best districts there is. I've always been taught, you like your job, you do your best. And I've been trying to do my best for, since 1978-'79 school year. And like I said, my mother's 87 years old, works every day still. So I kind of feel that runs in the bloodline for me, that I enjoy, I love my kids, when they get on the buses, they're my kids. And I try to do the best for each and every one of them, and do my best for each and every one of you as Board Members, and I thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
Very well deserved.
And public and staff comments, if there's anyone from the audience that would like to speak, you can do so when that item on the agenda is being discussed. You may, you will need to approach the podium and provide your name, you will have three minutes. Anyone wanting to provide us with printed correspondence can leave it with Mr. Satinin at the media table. Sedalia School District Foundation, I see Deidra is ready.
Okay, we're going to talk about four things here. The golf tournament, so the golf tournament was way back in June, but I wanted to report some totals to you. We were able to raise that day $22,000 for the Sedalia School District Foundation, and that's the highest total we've ever raised from a golf tournament, so, super excited about that. We don't know if it was because of the online auction, because it was a nice day, we don't know, but hey, it was successful. And so, we hope to just build on that for next, or the two tee times, because we got a lot of positive feedback about that, so, next year, we can pile them in there again, and hopefully do better than that. Our back-to-school treat bags, as you know, we normally do a breakfast, but we haven't been able to do that for the last couple of years, so once again, we'll be doing our back-to-school treat bags. We're reaching out to our former partners that funded, Mr. Gardner, we're counting on you for meat.
Let me, let me know what...
The beef sticks, so.
Okay.
Because they're going to miss out on their bacon again this year.
Okay.
So we're counting on you for beef sticks, but we're going to do that probably the week after school starts. It's a little hectic, we know, those first couple days, so administrators, teachers, be looking for your treat bags, like sometime the second week of school. Bob came to us, to Paula and I, one meeting, with a great little, you know, fundraiser, moneymaker for the foundation, and he almost beat us to death trying to get us to do it, Bob, didn't you? We got like 19 emails, "Are you going to do this? Are you going to do this?" And then he just took it upon himself to help us complete the task, and we got started a little slow, Bob, I will admit, that we didn't, it didn't, you know, we just kind of said, "Okay, Bob, yeah, we'll, we'll do it." But then when Bob kind of got it rolling for us, it took off. And so, on the first day of school, we're going to have these fabulous little picture frames out in front of every building, and this is kind of our prototype, and we're selling some advertisements, and it just so happens we've selected local dentists to advertise with us, because we want to see those kiddos' smiles, and we know that we may have some masks, but they are going to be outside, and we're hoping, you know, if we have some individual pictures, maybe they can take their mask down for the photo. So we're going to advertise that first day of school, we've got the district's Twitter, I think, account on there, so Bob has agreed to post those photos for us, and it's just kind of a fun thing to have those kiddos back on our social media pages and on the, on the foundation page for back-to-school, and it's just a little way the foundation can make a little money and advertise for these dentists. So we're pretty excited about it, and I would be remiss if I did not say thank you to Bob for, for making us do this. We, I know, we don't always, we don't always follow your lead, but thank you for having us do this, we really have gotten into it now, and we're having a lot of fun with it. And I want to thank Richie Simons, who I think the man must work 24 hours a day, seven days a week. He met us yesterday to pick these frames up that he built for us, and painted, and so, and just was happy to do it, and so you have a gem in the district with Richie, and I think he can probably do anything that anybody ever asked him to do, so, we're so excited that he did that for us, and it's going to be a lot of fun. The last thing I want to talk about, and we've been kind of holding this back until we maybe knew a little more information, and not many things leave me speechless, but I got a phone call maybe a month or two ago, and was told that the district had been named as a beneficiary for the estate of Mrs. Edith Donath. And we were quite surprised, and even more surprised to learn, that it's an unrestricted donation and very close to six figures. And so, we are trying to figure out what we're going to do with that money, but there's been lots of conversations about enhancing, enhancing the mini-grant program, enhancing the mini-grant program. So be looking for mini-grant enhancements, probably not until spring of 2022, but we're so excited and so thankful. Ms. Donath, as you know, was a distinguished alumni, she purchased a bench outside of the PAC, and her last, one of her last wishes was to have her picture taken on that bench, and we were able to fulfill that for her, and so, quite surprised when we were named as a beneficiary, and we're, we're very thankful for that donation.
Very nice.
Thank you. SCEA, is there anybody here? If there are no changes to the agenda, I will hear a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda items 4.1 to 4.7, if there are no questions, comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve those items.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then consent item 4.8, the UMB Healthcare Services, Mr. Kofelt will be abstaining. And so do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Norton and Mrs. Bromfield?
Yeah, Mrs. Brownfield, word on, we met.
Just as a reminder, that we met consortium agreement is to allow extended catalog course opportunities for our students at the high school for dual credit. Did you have any additional questions from our last conversation?
Anybody? No? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Fraley on the security, safety vehicle?
Yes, this was brought up for discussion the last board meeting. Up for decision this meeting to request the purchase of a vehicle for the new safety security director to do his job in between campuses and add that vehicle to our fleet. Again, we were looking at going through the Missouri Highway Patrol's fleet, where they resell their vehicles that are usually 50,000 to 60,000 miles or less, seeking approval to make that purchase.
And so the amounts shown for the 2018, 2019 models, the max would be 21,000?
That, that is the typical average price. You know, each vehicle be priced, it does slight difference depending on mileage, et cetera. Those vehicles are stripped out of their, you know, the Highway Patrol's technology, and those types of things are taken out and removed from those vehicles.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
Do you know which model you'll, you'll be picking? 2018 or 2019?
It would depend, their inventory varies continually. I think the first time we discussed this was a couple months ago. So as of today, I do not know the exact inventory load that they have available. If the board would like to approve an up to amount, that would be, you know, acceptable, certainly. Up to 22,500, I think, would certainly cover it. Try to get the best deal we can.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the safety, security vehicle purchase up to 22,500.
Is there a second?
Steve, you look like you had a thought.
Well, I just, there's been a lot of conversation around this. I just don't, you know, we've even looked at our existing fleet of vans and cars and trying to have that crystal ball as we look out into the future about positions in our district as far as staffing and then just the life and the mileage and everything with those vehicles. And so I just don't want anybody to think that we, we're just willy-nilly. We create a position, and now we got to go buy a car, because that's not what's going on. We're, we've, we've looked at our fleet and tried to forecast out what would be the best option. And we, we do think this is the best option, and I like the up to 22,500.
Thanks for, I appreciate you giving the point. Sorry to interrupt the vote, but that was good.
Yeah, and I would reiterate that, too, as, as far as, you know, the, the two existing security vehicles we have are very aged and approaching their, you know, useful life, in my opinion. So I don't, we, we may or may not replace those moving forward in the future. Also have, you know, a couple of our maintenance vehicles will have to be looked at this year as well.
Okay, so I had a motion, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Curry will discuss salary schedule revision for crossing guards?
Yes, just in order to try and remain competitive with almost any aspect of industry or employment around our community, raising the minimum wage, raising our rate of hourly pay to $12 an hour, to try and entice people to, to fill a crossing guard position, we thought imperative. And so that's why I bring to you this evening a request to raise our hourly rate for our crossing guards to $12 an hour.
So do you want to have any questions for Mr. Curry?
I would just comment that it is becoming extremely tricky to hire anybody anymore. It is almost a negotiation with every position, every person that walks through the door because of the wages that are being paid in other places. It is becoming a tightrope to walk. And I don't, I don't know when it's going to end. So it's frightening. We have people quitting, you know. We've had people quit the end of last week, different jobs, just don't want to do it. I can make a dollar an hour more here. And, you know, we offer benefit package and that. And that hourly rate seems to be more important a lot of times. So just so the board knows, and I'm sure you all are aware of what goes on in our community, but it is, it is a slippery slope and very tricky. And we're just trying to get the best people that we can in front of our children. Crossing guards, one of those you don't think of, but it's very, very important. Remember last year, we had a crossing guard get hit by a vehicle. So it's a dangerous job. It's only two hours a day, so trying to find somebody that's just going to come in an hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon. It's a very select group. So we have to try to make it somewhat attractive to them. So we appreciate the board working with us on all of our positions that we've had to bring to you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. There's no other questions? Do I have a motion to approve this increase?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And Mr. Pyle?
Yes, along that same line with pay increase, I'd like to ask the board for consideration to increase the pay for homebound teachers from $20 per hour to $30 per hour. DESI has expanded some of their guidelines throughout last year and this year with what they will allow within the homebound regulations that we need to follow and relating back to what's going on in our country and in the world with COVID and things. We, we had an increase in numbers last year, and we expect that to be the same this year. So it will help us talk staff into being willing to help and, and just pay them for that extra time. Many of the times, this is spent after school hours. So it would be helpful for us to be able to do this.
Mr. Pyle, we have a lot of, with virtual and a lot of different students receive education a lot of different ways. Could you kind of define what our homebound student is?
Yes, glad to do that, yes. Prior to last year, homebound instruction were, for the most part, was for medically fragile students that couldn't attend during the regular school day. And the expectation from DESI was that we would spend an hour per day with those students for every hour, for every full day of school. So it was a five, five-hour per week on most weeks. And that was one-on-one with the teacher in the home or at a designated place, depending on their health. It could also be for other reasons. But for the most part, it's for students that have medical issues keeping them coming to school. The new guidance within that has given us a little more leeway due to the, due to COVID and medically fragile again. But they've allowed us to, just some more options because of going into homes and people feeling safe. So we can do that by phone. We can do that by paper packets if the family chooses that option. And we're incorporating more technology. So some are using some of our Canvas programs within our district and working with a teacher that is willing to do this on the other side of a device, working through that if the family has those options and prefer that, too. So many times, it's, it's us working with the families' need and trying to meet that need. And, and I just appreciate the teachers that we have so much. I feel like I, I had to overask many of these folks the last couple of years within this, because there's a select few that would say yes every time, you know. So they were working all day and then, and then being willing to help three and four kids. So this pay increase will help us expand the, you know, the folks that are willing to help.
Thank you.
I think the $30 an hour is more in line with what we pay summer school teachers and hourly subs.
Yes, matches that back up.
That's where we came up with the $30. Where is, where's the, are they paid, is that paid by, are we reimbursed for that by anybody? Or is that basically coming?
Through, through our attendance. That's how we're, we do gain attendance for these students. So that's how that works.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Triplet, the revised board meeting schedule for the next two months?
Yeah, you have in front of you a board, board schedule. I I think the, with our mask mandate and that ordinance, we need to review that process every 30 days. So our next board meeting on September 20th would be beyond that 30 days. So I'd like the board to move that to the Monday prior, September 13th. And then that would cause also the October. I don't, I'd like to do maybe a couple months at a time just to see where we are with, with the current status of the mask ordinance. So I think that would move our October meeting to the 11th.
Correct. Any questions, comments, thoughts? Scott has made the motion to move. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that is it, this, that's it for this evening. So I need a motion to adjourn to close executive session.
I'll make a motion to go to close session pursuant to Section 610-021, one legal, three personnel, 13 protected records, 14 records protected from disclosure of law by the Missouri statutes.
And a second?
Second.
And roll call vote by the Secretary?
Kenny Kofelt?
Aye.
Scott Gardner?
Aye.
Matthew Heron?
Aye.
Sam Kimpton?
Aye.
Michael Stees?
Aye.
Barbara Schrader?
Aye.
Diana Nichols?
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.